All right, folks, thank you very much. Anyone else set? Thanks, Ed. Well, this meeting to order, first of all, in accordance with the open meeting law, the Board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Additionally, it's a hybrid meeting. We have two -- I'm sorry. Okay, we have two members of the Board who are participating remotely, so that all votes this evening will be by roll call vote of Mr. Massey, Mr. Studo. Again, we appreciate their attendance this evening, and I understand they're both feeling a little bit under the weather, so the only potential virus that they're going to share with us is through the computer and not with whatever they're dealing with. So again, we appreciate their willingness to -- their ability to participate with us this evening. With that, we could just rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this public for which it stands, one day under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First order of business is going to be Board member reports. And I'll tell you what, I've got to start off first, and then we'll go to the other members first. First of all, a local member of the community, probably one of the most respected members of the community, is celebrating a birthday this week, Gordon Hall, 93 years, young and still active and involved in municipal affairs. We're so grateful for him choosing North Reading so many years ago to be a resident because he's contributed so much, and we wish him an extremely happy birthday, and I know he and his family are celebrating this week. Again, National Night Out last week was a terrific event that took place, and the attendance was phenomenal. We had a beautiful evening. We had terrific chefs from our fire department, and we had a number of tables set up by local boards, committees, commissions, public safety officials, public health officials, Council on Aging, Sustainability Committee. Just a fantastic evening with a lot of active participation, and again, Board members got an invitation from Annette, who was the cardio drumming instructor. And we cut the entertainment for the evening along with, you know, some face painting and everything that was being done with the fire apparatus and bouncy houses and all the rest that went along, and the petting zoo. But the highlight certainly was the senior cardio drumming group. They had 20 members of their 40-member crew participating, and what a show they put on, and it was a pleasure to see and a joy to listen to, and I guess they're going on tour. If they haven't, they should be. But what a terrific organization, and it was great. But again, congratulations to Community Impact Team and all the participants, those that put it together. It's not an easy task, and the cooperation of the weather was even better. That was just a bonus. But a lot of people -- and again, we had, for the first time, the suggestion of someone in the audience here and Mr. Massey, you know, the Select Board set up a table to take public input, and it was great. It was good to see people and just chat a little bit more informally than settings like this, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful evening. So again, congratulations to CIT and all the people that put it together, and again, everybody that came out. And again, it was all English. Let's see. Again, just want to mention TJ Tedeschi, Veterans Service Director, who did retire. And again, his last day was a day of National Night Out, and he didn't finish the day until National Night Out was over. He was there to greet everybody and assist --
Read a book.
And read a book to the kids, or read a book to them. He did a great job, but again, he was a -- he's going to be sorely missed. He did a fantastic job in the short period of time he was here, a true presence in the community. And again, he offered to be of assistance to the future Veterans Services Director in the community moving forward. And again, it was sad that he had to make a choice and to choose his family over us, which was the right choice as far as his service at this particular time, but he also offered his services moving forward, and we're greatly appreciative of that. Just Board of Health, I want to acknowledge their quick response on the West Nile virus that was found in North Reading. They mobilized quickly, along with a number of people within Town Hall, to get the notifications out to the public so that people could protect themselves in the best event. But again, it worked seamlessly as far as getting the word out, and again, much appreciated. Also, in relation to the Board of Health and the CIT and the Drug-Free Coalition, there will be some informational sessions being held for nicotine-free generation. Some consideration being given. There's been 17 communities that have passed this initiative. It's being considered here, but before the Board of Health considers anything, there's going to be informational sessions first in coordination with the Drug-Free Coalition and the Community Impact Team. Those dates are now set for September 30th, October 23rd. Those will be night meetings, and the location, I believe, is the Distance Learning Lab, but we'll get those announcements out. And then there'll be one more during the day at 10:00 a.m. on November 20th. So they're looking -- they'll be looking for a significant amount of public input in relation to how to proceed, whether to proceed at all, and then after that public input, the Board of Health will take it under consideration. So for those that are interested, no matter which side of the issue you're on, as far as the nicotine-free generation thing, there'll be some informational sessions for you to have your input. Again, Mobile Home and Rent Control Board will be meeting again next week as far as the discontinuance application on Perry Mobile Home Park. And then, once they conclude that, those hearings, they'll be making a recommendation to this Board, and then the final determination as to whether or not the discontinuance is issued or not will be determined by the Select Board. So we can anticipate within the next month or so, six weeks, it being an agenda item for us to consider. And again, Community Planning Commission is a vacancy. It's a result of Max Murphy's resignation, and we appreciate Max's service to the community, but he's taking another path and furthering his education and moving out of town, so he resigned his position. And as some of you may be familiar with what we went through last year, we'll be posting the vacancy for 30 days and then have a joint meeting for interviews and selection of a replacement, probably again within six weeks or so, six to eight weeks, but we'll get those dates firmed up and coordinated with the Community Planning Commission. It'll be a joint appointment between the Planning Commission and the Select Board. And anybody who's interested in serving, please get the application in through the Town Administrator's Office, and we'll be screening them and interviewing people. A gentleman right over there did put in last year, but it looks like he's going to be a little busy now with some other things and may not be putting it in again, but we'll see. All right, so that'll be coming up. On that, I don't have anything else at this particular point, huh? Mrs. Maureen?
I think you covered the CIT and the National Night Out.
Yeah.
You covered all of it.
That was a wonderful --
That was great.
Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, two things. One is the -- we've been advertising, the Tax Aid Committee's been advertising for a good two months now for people who qualify for the mass circuit breaker to apply for our new senior means tested property tax break. Of the potential 400 people who filed the circuit breaker, we had 26 people come forward to apply for this extra 50%. So it's far less than I would have expected, but we also have an asset limitation above their house that might have restricted people from doing it. So we will be getting together for a debrief on how we did, how we can get the word out next time, how we can do it better. But for a first year, we've got these 26 people who applied for it, and they're going to get some sort of benefit on their property taxes, so that's good. And then, in that same spirit, I saw in the transcript too, now the Senior Tax Workup program is taking application, it's again, for this next year. So you have, you can get up to $2,000 if you work for it, but you can get up to $2,000 off your property taxes. You have to be a senior, obviously you have to own a home, and the deadline, it's very popular. I think that program always sells out, so to speak. Yeah, it always sells out. So you'll want to get your application in by, I think it's by September, yeah, September 15th, so you don't have much time to apply. Just come down to the Town Administrator's Office, and they can help you get the application together, and I encourage you to do that as well. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chud, thank you. I've got a few things. One I want to touch upon, a great tip, Sue, again, I mentioned it last board meeting, but didn't really get to touch upon too much. The general manager for Redding Municipal Light Department, who is no longer working for them. He was a great gentleman. He was present. He was accommodating. He was thorough, and I think that the communities that he served benefited from his leadership. So wanted to give a public thank you to him. For Fire Station Building Committee, our committee is working to get a contract executed this week. Important clarifications were needed before really signing off, so that was some good time that was spent on some good clarifications of the contract. Facilities Master Plan Committee, we have received our filed report. That's exciting, finally wrap that up. I think it'll be in the Select Board's interest to have the Facilities Master Plan come and present to the Select Board their findings, and I think, you know, thank them and acknowledge the committee for all the work that they've done. There will be a potential, friends of veterans who are looking to gear up, get some, look to solicit more membership and become more public, so, and get more friends. So you will hear more from that in the future. And then, as far as the seniors, my last subject here is about the elder services not receiving the 9,800 grants, and I think maybe it's important, you know, it's a good budgeting practice that could be, is if you don't always consider that you're going to receive 100% of the grants. And I think if you budget, you know, 75 to 50% of the band of the, 75 to 50% of the grants that you expect to receive, the rest is gravy. Now, what that does down the line is questionable, but there, maybe there's an opportunity where we can identify which grants we typically always get and ones that are a little bit more riskier. That'll do with me. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Mr. Studo?
Just one thing, that the, the next hearing for the 20 Elm 40B, the contractor, developer asked for a continuance on August 7th, and the next one will be on September 11th. And at that point, as we get closer, the DBA will also finalize which room in the high school they will use, because there's a couple of different options. Thank you.
So that's September 11th.
Yep.
And location to be determined, right?
Yeah, they're, they'll be somewhere in the school, just a matter of where, whether it's the digital learning lab or the, the room across from the high school.
Great.
I mean, from the library, I'm, excuse me.
Okay, so it'll be somewhere --
The building will not change, so we'll just --
Which room, okay. So it will be at the middle school, high school building complex, just which room will be determined. Great. Right. Now, public comment. Any public comment? Excellent, thank you. Appointments, election workers. Mr. Gilberto, you want to go through, we have Town Clerk with us. Okay.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Oh, hi, Sue. This is Duplin.
How are you?
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
All right. So this is a --
Let's get my notes.
This is a --
On the election?
This is an annual, yeah, this is an annual event for the Board. And again, we have, what, two or three options to take, and generally, we take the one based upon the recommendation of the Town Clerk, so why don't you explain the process and what you're looking for?
Yep, so the election workers appointments by law are yearly through August 31st. The Board of Registitors must vote to recommend these appointments to the Select Board. We met last month and voted unanimously to recommend the appointments before you tonight. I just wanted to mention also, anyone interested in becoming an election worker can apply in person at the Town Clerk's office or online through our Boards and Committees website page. I also received recommendations from the Democratic and Republican Town Committees. Last year, as you know, was an extremely busy election year. We held many trainings for the election workers. I also encouraged cross-training to cover as needed, and as you all know, the election workers assist with in-person early voting. You see them there. We have advanced early ballot processing prior to Election Day. They work on Election Day, and they also work town meetings. So, and I just also wanted to say, I am fortunate to have an abundance of dedicated, hard-working election workers. Some municipalities don't have enough. So they, we all worked hard last year. They did a great job. You know, they're in the line of fire with all the voters. You know, they're trained well, no issues. So with that, I'm just asking that the Board please vote the election workers for 2025 to 2026.
Thank you very much. And again, for the Board's information, we have three choices to make. One, the appointment of election officers for each position in each voting precinct, we can do that. Two, we can appoint election officers from the list submitted by the registrars as recommended by the registrars. Or three, we can choose not to appoint any election officers whereby after August 15th, the responsibility of appointing and assigning election officers to positions and precincts would revert to the registrars. So we have one, two, or three to choose. Generally speaking, we have, in the past, gone with the appointment of election officers from the list submitted by the Board of Registitors as recommended by the registrars, which is option two. So I'll take the motion, and then we'll have any discussion. Mrs. Maureen?
Mr. Chairman, I move to exercise the following option for the appointment of election workers for the elections held between September 1st, 2025 through August 31st, 2026. Choose one of the three options.
So number two?
Number two. Appoint election officers from the list submitted by the registrars as recommended by the registrars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Waller, on the main motion before us, and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Again, the list submitted by the registrars, the Board has been provided with the list. So if you're in favor of that, we just vote yes. Any further discussion on the motion before us? Mr. Massey or Mr. Studo?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just want to thank those volunteers as well. They do a terrific job. They run a tight ship, and they greet you with a smile, but it is a great process, and I want to thank them very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Studo, any comments or questions? Hearing none, okay?
No.
And again, Chair would just like to echo the same comments as Mr. Massey did. I mean, Sue, you do a terrific job. You have a great crew of people, a great staff, and with all the challenges that you've had over the last few years, you've met, and exceeded our expectations. You've done a fantastic job, and we appreciate all the efforts and time that everybody's put in.
I appreciate that.
All right, Sue. Hearing no more further discussion?
All right.
No further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mrs. Maureen?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, Sue.
All right, thank you very much. Good night.
Good night. And again, just for informational purposes, we're going on a roll call vote because we have two members who are remote. Sustainability Committee. Mrs. Maureen, you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following name of an individual for appointment to the Sustainability Committee for a term to expire December 31st, 2025, and to waive Select Board policy 3.2 appointment procedures, and that is Ms. Jane Tamlin Hayden.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Waller. Mr. Waller, you there, liaison?
Yes, yep.
Mr. Wallner?
So again, this committee continues to attract a lot of people to it. It's because of its repositioned objectives, and so this is a good person to have on board. She has plenty of time and is very dedicated to this topic, so I support her being brought in for three years.
And she's an associate member now.
Yes.
This says, just through the end of this year. Is it an unexpired term?
She's filling a --
She's filling a, so again, in December, we do the re-ups. She'll be up for reconsideration then. And just as far as the Sustainability Committee, they had a great table at the National Night Out, and I just want to shout out to my wife, Sue. She did a great job of sorting through all the stuff and where it was supposed to go. She does a far better job than I do as far as recycling. But it was a great, great table set up, great demonstrations. They had just basically a bin full of different types of trash, and, you know, what's recyclable, what isn't. It was very interactive and very useful. But again, we appreciate Jane's willingness to serve and already her, she's been an active associate member to date, so. Any further discussion on the appointment to the Sustainability Committee? Mr. Massey, Mr. Studo, you all set? Good. On the motion, all those in favor, oh, excuse me, Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Jane Tamlin Hayden, is that? State the name of Jane.
I didn't say the name, sorry.
Yeah, so Jane Tamlin Hayden is the name.
I just had it, I have the meeting packet here.
Yeah, that's okay. And Mr. Massey?
The name's Mr. Chair.
It's Jane Tamlin Hayden. Okay, so Mr. Massey, Jane Tamlin Hayden. Mr. Studo, Jane Tamlin Hayden, correct?
Jane Tamlin Hayden.
Okay. Mrs. Maureen?
Jane Tamlin Hayden, aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Jane Tamlin Hayden.
And Chair's Jane Tamlin Hayden. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
And do you think we did this every two weeks for a year and a half?
I know. You're a little rusty.
Ha.
All right. Next order of business is acceptance of a gift for Council on Aging, is it?
Sorry, said Council on --
Yeah, I know. It's for the North Reading Police Department. Right, so to accept a gift in the amount of $15,000 from Amazon Robotics. So, Mrs. Maureen?
Mr. Chairman, I move to vote to accept the gift in the amount of $15,000 from Amazon Robotics from the North Reading Police Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Waller. Mr. Gilberto, you want a brief explanation instead?
Just a brief explanation, it's a donation from Amazon to the police department in the amount of $15,000 to support the department's drone program. The drone program is an important component for us here in our community, specifically and particularly because of the amount of open space and wetland that we have that at times needs to be searched when somebody goes missing. The drone is an important part of it, and the department relies on it as well when they're in a situation where the ability to get close to a property or a location is challenged, that the drone can do that for them without having to put officers at further risk than they need to be. Certainly appreciate the work of the department with the drone program and the support of Amazon for the program as well. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Studo, any discussion? No. Mr. Massey? No. Anybody else? Again, extremely grateful to Amazon Robotics for their generous contribution to support the efforts of the police department, and certainly acknowledge it and appreciate it very much. On the motion, all those in favor here, Mr. Studo, on the motion?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mrs. Maureen?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Next order on the agenda is a Class 1 motor vehicle sales license, Bone Equipment LLC, DBA Bobcat of Boston, 20 Concord Street. I will be recusing myself. I have a family member who holds a Class 2 license. A Class 2 license is a used auto license. A Class 1 license also has the ability to sell used vehicles. While there isn't any direct conflict, I just want to avoid an appearance of a conflict, so I will be removing myself at this particular point in town, turning it over to the Vice Chair to transact the business. I will not be deliberating on the matter, nor will I be voting. I'll be abstaining. All right, so, Mr. Waller?
Thank you. Do we have representatives here today? Can you please come forward and please introduce yourself?
Good evening, I'm Mark Blanchard, I'm the President of Bobcat of Boston.
I'm Pete DeTone, I'm the COO.
Okay. And then Michael, would you like to preface on this?
Sure. So we have an application received from the, from Mr. Blanchard as a signatory to the application for a Class 1 license. Our understanding is that the business is being sold --
Transferred to a new owner who will be continuing to operate the business at that location on Concord Street, which is great to hear. We circulated the application to the various departments involved. There was one issue that did come back that was conservation and nature, and I know that the conservation agent was out at the property today, had a successful meeting with you guys to try to look at the site, and it appears there's just been a bit of expansion of equipment parked and some fill on one corner of the site. And I know the agent, Ms. Eldridge, was satisfied that there's a commitment to rectify the situation as soon as possible. There may need to be a filing, I think, of some sort to do that, from what I understand, and I believe they're committed to do that. So at this point, both Ms. Eldridge and I are prepared to recommend that the Board grant the license. The Conservation Commission has its own enforcement capability should there be any sort of undue delay or noncompliance that occurs over time, and you will again see this license in front of you in a few short months for renewal in December as well. So it would be our recommendation to, that the Board vote to grant the license.
Okay. Do you have anything to add to what you just said?
We're excited to be in town and be nice members of the community.
Any changes that you'll be making with the business, or is the plan just to continue to operate as is?
Continue to operate as is.
Great. Excellent. Thank you, we're welcome.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Captain? All good? Vincenzo? Any court? Any discussion? Nick?
I'm good. Pretty good.
Okay. Well, this is easy then. Okay, I'm good too. So we'll go to the motion then.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve a request for a license for the bone equipment of L L C doing business with Bobcat of Boston, 20 Concord Street, to expire January 1st to 2026, subject to all regular department requirements.
Second. Aye.
Thank you, Vincenzo. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mrs. Maureen?
Aye.
And the Vice Chair is aye. Thank you, congratulations.
Is that a mistake?
Oh, sorry. And, oh, I'm sorry, and the Chair is abstaining. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Appreciate it.
If I need a Bobcat, I know where to go.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair?
Is there a license to sign?
Is there a paper copy of the license that's here for them to sign?
Oh, yes.
Vincenzo and Nick will have to swing by.
Yeah. So through you, Mr. Vice Chairman, to Mr. Studo and Mr. Massey. We have a paper copy of the license that will ultimately, should have a signature from at least one of you so that a majority of the Board has signed it, so if you are able to stop by when you are well enough, we'd love to have you sign off. Thank you.
Okay.
I was gonna say, we would love to have, or we need to have you sign off.
It's only somewhat off.
All right. I don't know if you guys caught that, so we just, one of them, when they're able to stop and sign it, they'll have ready to require three signatures, and it'll be ready for you. I don't know if you're waiting on a paper copy, but I think -- Just hold on one, and we'll pick it up. Okay, great. Thank you.
Congratulations and good luck.
Good night, thank you very much.
Next order of business, Camovitilis license. Next order of business, Kamavichalas License. Skewers, is that what it is? How do you say it?
Squares.
What is it?
Squares.
Squares. Squares, LLC, DBA Heavenly Donuts, Sixty-Eight Winter Street. Well, we probably should have put this first on the agenda because of all the chatter around town and the desire to have you reopen here. All right, so what we have is a, an application, so if the applicants just want to come forward and tell us what you're looking to do and, we'll hack on the application. Is it Mr. Corielli or Mr. Magazur? Two well-known individuals in the community, again, comes to the business community, and again, volunteer activists in the community, and likes to have local people who are taking over this establishment. So tell us what your plans are and what we're going to do.
Going to reopen as Heavenly Donuts.
Yeah?
Yep.
And as soon as we sign it?
Pretty much, tomorrow.
People want to know, what's it going to open?
Hopefully the end of next week.
Yeah.
It'd be our goal, just we're getting everybody lined up, you know, the deferred maintenance taken care of, getting employees back in, get the payroll system set up, POS system activated, we're running through all the maintenance.
Great. You still keeping your daytime job too and taking this on?
Yep. For now.
For now, yeah. Brave soul, all right.
Been busy.
You're going to be very busy, I'm sure you've been busy already. All right, so, Mr. Gibberly, as far as departmental reports, everything's in order?
Sure, so there are a couple of, you know, maintenance-related items that I think Mr. Corielli just alluded to, that the building inspector identified, and I know the building inspector indicated to me that there's, you know, no concern that they'll be addressed prior to reopening, so we recommend that the license be granted.
Excellent. All right. We have a motion. Mrs. Moran?
We do. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Kamavichalas License, LLC doing business as Heavenly Donuts, at Sixty-Eight Winter Street, to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five, subject to all regulatory requirements.
Second.
A motion and a second. Squares, you going to explain that, or do you want to explain it? My wife made me. Okay. Good explanation. I had to pick a, pick a name. Last minute thing. All right. Any further discussion on the main motion before us?
Mr. Chairman? Yes, just through you, noting that the note that went to the board indicated that there was no food service permit in hand, but I believe that's since been addressed. I know you've met with Mr. Grace, I believe you've been down there and inspected already.
Yes, the application's in, we did the pre-inspection. He's going to come back hopefully the end of this week.
Great.
Do the final.
So that all happened after this formal.
Yeah, that's fine, this is all subject to regulatory approval anyway, so.
Still, we're, again, continue to recommend that.
All right.
For the sake of the coffee drinking public. And you're part of the franchise, this is part of the franchise.
Yep. Yeah, licensee agreement with Heavenly Donuts. Yep.
All right. Mr. Massey, any questions, comments?
Yeah, just want to, just want to say that good luck, guys. I'm really happy to see you guys partnering up and wish you the best of luck, and you guys have to well.
Thank you.
Mr. Studo?
Jane? Nice to have a bath.
Thank you.
Yeah. Your iced coffee, do you take it with cream and sugar, or? You're not fussy. You want espresso on yours though, right? Vincenzo?
Cold brew black, that's my third coffee of the day, I have my two espressos at home.
Mrs. Moran? True Italian.
So excited you guys are reopening.
Thank you, me too. We've had a lot of feedback from the community and really grateful to be part of it moving forward.
Let's, let's keep me, it looks great, they drove by and my kids said, "Are they opening?"
Yeah.
I said, "Yeah," but the kid's there.
And we're getting a lot of attention, every time we're there, somebody's pulling in the parking lot, trying to come down the drive-through.
No, it's exciting to have such a prominent location to reopen and not be shut at store front. So thank you for taking it on.
Mr. Wallner?
Don't take away people's coffee, I'll tell you. No, it's all good, it sounds good.
All good, and again, I'm extremely elated that it's you two gentlemen that are taking this on, and again, it's a prime location and it's an establishment, and a lot of people take advantage of it. And the grand opening, grand reopening is going to be.
It's going to be a busy one.
It's going to be busy.
Yeah.
And I'll probably be in line with everybody else.
Should be exciting.
So we wish you much luck, much luck and success, and.
Thank you.
You bring back much of the staff that was there before, a lot of them.
Almost all of it.
Ninety-five percent of them.
Yeah.
Fantastic, that's good, because they're a great group, very people, great crew, Mike's a great guy.
Yeah, it really said a lot about him when, you know, everybody wanted to come back to work there.
That's terrific, that's great. Well, much success. So on the motion here, Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mrs. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Congratulations, best of luck, and we'll see you shortly.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Board members, the town administrator has been kind enough to forward us a draft annual fall town meeting, October town meeting warrant, a whole list of articles, not that all of them are going to be on, but this is just what's, what's on the, on the docket for consideration, and we'll turn it over to the town administrator to walk us through it.
Sure, so to further emphasize Mr. O'Leary's comments, this is a bit of a different approach for the warrant. We sort of talked internally and put a number of different things on this list of potential articles. So this is not a warrant, it's not scheduled to be signed this evening. As I sit here in front of you, I, we do not necessarily have funding sources identified for all of the items that are on the list either. Simply intended to put these items on there as things that, some of which will require action because of timelines that are associated with them or other concerns, but some of which are, you know, maybe much more discretionary but have been items that we've discussed here, maybe we've heard about from the community that the board may wish to consider, you know, for things, you know, going back a number of years, to be candid with you. We just wanted to spark the discussion. To be clear, we don't have any expectation that all of these articles will go forth in the current form, but there are a few that will require action. So if you want, I'll take them in order.
It works.
And again, just can't, can't stress enough for the public, this does not necessarily reflect the intention of what will go to town meeting, it's simply a start for what is a very compressed timeline for our October town meeting. Those of you paying attention are aware, we come out of June town meeting and there is not much time before getting ready for October. This warrant will need to be mailed by the end of the first week of September in order to meet the charter requirement of four weeks' notice, a month's notice. There should be two weeks' notice for a delivery. That said, Articles One and Two are pretty routine with reports of committees and then any prior year bills that are out there. I can't think of a prior year bill that I've heard of as of yet, but we'll continue to monitor that as we go into town meeting. Articles Three, Four, Five, and Six are pretty standard articles. We are not, we don't always put funds, money into the stabilization fund, and I'm not sure whether there'll be a request to do so this fall or not. The uncertainty is because we are still going through the closing out of fiscal year twenty twenty five, which ended on June thirtieth. The account and departments are working through the accounting for that year that will ultimately result in a submission to the State Department of Revenue for certified free cash. Again, free cash, not free money, it's not grown on trees, it reflects money that was not spent from departmental budgets or money that came in in excess of what we were forecasting would come in. But that is often a funding source for a lot of what the financial articles are at town meeting, particularly in the fall. So again, not certain about a transfer into the stabilization fund, but we're keeping it on there. Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund, we do have an annual plan that calls for a transfer into that fund, so we will look to try to meet that plan using free cash this fall. The Solid Waste Stabilization Fund, it's often determined by how much funding might have been left over from the previous year's budget for that item, and that account has, you know, been closed but it's not yet available in certified free cash, so we won't have a dollar amount just yet. The Participating Funding Arrangement, or PFA Fund, so that's generally funding that we forecasted that we may spend in the PFA as a supplement to our health insurance. Anything that's not spent from that, that's left over, gets set aside into the stabilization fund for use to reduce the cost of health insurance for active employees in future fiscal years. So we get to Article Seven is where some of the dollar amounts start to show up here, and again, some of them are more certain than others. Many of these numbers are estimates based on very initial information, and they will continue to be fine-tuned between now and the date that you sign the warrant, and even perhaps after that as we head into town meeting. So, the secondary school building project, for those who are unaware, this is a middle high school project, the board, the town and the designer and the project manager were in litigation for a number of years, it was a settlement that was reached, and these funds were the result of that. So they've been set aside while we go through the required closeout process with the state school building authority. We are in a queue now to be, appear before eventually in the next few months, we hope, a board to be approved for closeout, although there is some additional audit work that will still need to take place at the state level. But we are facing the challenge of a ban, a bond anticipation note that can only run for ten years and is now coming due. And so what we believe is going to be the prudent course is to take the funding that we set aside for this project as a result of settlements, and basically pay down the short-term debt by the amount that was set aside, the two-point-six million dollars. So we're sort of holding that as a placeholder article for a vote that would transfer that money. That is the full amount that's in that stabilization fund, there's a little bit, there's more, a little bit more in the form of interest, it's not included in that number, but that would be our best way to make sure we're reducing to the extent we can at October town meeting, which will be the last town meeting before the borrowing comes due in May, reducing the amount that might need to be borrowed permanently moving forward. And that total amount will depend upon how much we receive in a final payment from the Mass School Building Authority, and that won't be known, probably won't be known before our October town meeting. Any questions on that? I know it's a bit of a complex one, but something we've been talking about for a number of years.
Mr. Studo, Mr. Massey, you all set on that?
Mm-hmm.
Nick, you all set?
Okay. Okay. The second item is similarly a ban, bond anticipation note that's coming due, there's about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in principal for financing for the purchase of Nine Mill Street, which we'll talk about in a little bit, for being disposed of or sold. Similar situation to avoid a situation of having to pay debt service over what would be at least a ten-year period, what we've talked about with the finance department. I am with town council, is effectively paying down, paying off what's left of that debt, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, using a combination of retained earnings, which is free cash for the Water Enterprise, and a balance coming from the Water Infrastructure Stabilization Fund. That will ensure that we would not have any balance left to be long-term financed, to be free and clear of the debt. When we do sell Nine Mill Street, the funding coming in would then be available for either debt, debt payments or for capital improvement, similar to the Pulte Funds for the General Fund. So that would be a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar appropriation for Water Enterprise. Related to that is a discussion that we've been having internally, and that the board has embraced, will embraces, to seek to bring a broker on to assist the town in selling Nine Mill Street. We attempted to sell it for the assessed value in twenty twenty five of seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred dollars, but we had interest, we did not have any bidders that have come in for the property, so the thinking is, we can't pay, from an accounting standpoint under state law, we can't pay the broker using the proceeds of the sale, we have to actually appropriate funding upfront. So this is, I think, in excess of what we would expect to pay a commission, but it's a way to ensure that we have that financing in place to pay a commission to a broker when the property sells, and what we'll be doing in the coming weeks is soliciting interest from a variety of brokers in accordance with state procurement law. We would not enter into any sort of a contract until after town meeting approved this funding, because the funding is necessary, obviously. So I know those two are sort of related, any questions or discussion on that?
Any questions, members of the board? No? All set? Again, this is probably far more detailed than we ever are normally at in this stage of planning, and it's by design because some of these issues are a bit, bit more complex, we're looking for some initial feedback from the board with regard to these items, and we'll fine-tune things as we continue to go forward. The nine thousand.
Just want, just wanted to thank you for that, Mike, too. Appreciate you. You're members.
Sure. You're welcome. The nine thousand eight hundred dollars from a funding source to be determined for elder services, I think everyone in the room is well aware from our last meeting of the need for that department. I know that there's been some discussion that the, the dollar amount that's needed might be less than that because some of the funding for programming might be in place, but we understand from the Council on Aging that they're seeking the nine thousand eight hundred dollars, and so that's what we're identifying here as another transfer to be made under the operating budget to fund those services for fiscal year twenty twenty six, this current year. We had asked and were told at the last meeting, I think Mr. O'Leary had asked, and the board members had wanted to know what the timing was, they believe they have funding in the elder services to get through the, or into the month of December, so with October town meeting occurring prior to then, this would be an alternative for, for funding this. And I think the thinking in bringing it to town meeting is we have the ability to, based on the schedule as we can see it, but also highlighting the issue for town meeting as we go into what will be another very difficult fiscal year for the budget for fiscal year twenty-seven in just a few short months, and just making, making it clear, if this is prioritized, you know, that it will likely be at the expense of something else in the budget. I can't identify what that is right now for fiscal year twenty-seven, but we've heard that it's a priority, and so we want to make sure we're including town meeting in that. I do want to know, you know, we ordinarily would have pursued a request for reserve fund transfer from the Finance Committee, that wasn't, that, that isn't necessarily necessary given the timing, but I know that the Finance Committee is very much committed to assisting in any way possible, as soon as possible, to address this, this issue, so certainly want to recognize that, thank you for having me for that. We had a resignation in a staff position in the accounting department, and so would therefore be recommending to transfer funds from accounting to the Finance Department for purposes of funding the Assistant Finance Director salary sooner than the January first that was planned for in the budget. So I took kind of a projection, but I think that gets us the ability to hire in the early part of the fall, should we have a candidate named. And then the plan at the moment would be to proceed with hiring the, for the secondary position, but that's something we're going to have to really scrutinize as we go into the budget process, because the timing is going to put us back in the budget season with a position that's vacant, and as you know from our discussions last year, that's one of the first spots we've ordinarily looked at when trying to budget, to try to balance the budget. Yet, not trying to say that's our plan, but that's something that I think we need to be cognizant of. And finally, a five thousand dollars from, this is a rideshare funding that we get, a very small amount of money each year, it's like five thousand dollars I think we get in, and that's a portion of the fee for every rideshare ride that originates out of North Reading. So there's been some discussion about whether a transfer into elder services to support transportation from this fund might be helpful to provide some additional flexibility for the van program and for staffing for the van program. I say this knowing that we actually have an older article for a pilot program for transportation out there, I think it goes back two or three years, at least two years, that could fund that, but I just want everyone to know, we're still looking at that closely, trying to maintain that commitment to the extent that we can to the, the transportation program. Also not knowing whether or not we'll be able to get our access to the MBTA's The Ride program, which was something that was secured through a supplemental budget by the state delegation. We don't have information about the timing of when that might go into effect right now, so we're just trying to cover ourselves for the time being. So I know that's a lot. It's all proposed to be items that are transferred within or into the operating budget for this current fiscal year 2026. Article eight, amending the code for finances would establish a revolving fund, a dollar amount for a veteran's revolving fund. This would be an avenue to potentially have programming that's paid for with fees, money coming in to pay for the, for the program and then paid out for the cost of the program. One example was an initiative by a previous, now departed director to have, excuse me, some outings that had fee associated with it, but there wasn't really a clean way for us to collect the money and then pay the bill for it. And so this would provide that avenue for our, for our veterans. And this would be in addition to a friends of, what I think I heard mentioned earlier in the meeting, that's being worked on, similar to elder services or a library. So this would, this would not be authorizing money, it would be setting up a mechanism for money to come in, to be paid out in accordance with state law for revolving funds. Article, the ninth article proposed here would be to rescind authorizations to borrow for projects that maybe were abandoned or that were complete with a balance that was left. That's something that we put on as a routine article before we consider any capital items. I can't think of anything right now that might need to be rescinded, but I'm sure that there may be, depending upon how projects proceed over the next month or two. Article 10 on this list would be to amend the fiscal year 2026 capital budget, and I do need to just highlight that this, these two items are both going to be scrutinized by the capital improvement planning committee. So, you know, timing's a little backwards. Usually these projects come before the select board after they've been reviewed by the capital committee, but things are happening pretty quickly here in the, in the summer and we wanted to just make the community and the board aware that these are out there for discussion. One is supplemental funding for paving, which was discussed when we were before you with the capital improvement plan for 2026 for June town meeting. This would address paving projects, two that are very closely related, but very different in terms of how the paving would occur for Concord Street and for North Street and Lowell Road, as well as sidewalk on North Street. That's being brought up because the town, there was a Benevento property at 239 North Street, which was a single-family home and was purchased by, Benevento's been developed into a, I believe, an office facility, right, for Benevento?
A dump.
Yeah. There's a requirement that a sidewalk be constructed in front of the house. And so we're trying to sort of fill in the gaps for the rest of North Street, which is basically up to the extent of our property and down to Lowell Road for, for sidewalk based upon that permitting that's occurred. So we had talked when we were before you for the capital improvement planning committee that Concord Street would be prioritized as the paving project that would take place first and North and Lowell would come second. A challenge that we're running into is a condition of North and Lowell is pretty, is pretty challenging. And for Concord Street, we have the ability to more quickly do the project on existing projects, on existing contracts rather than having to procure it separately. So that's something we're going to talk about with some folks from capital improvement planning, but we may look to try to switch the order of those two based upon how quickly we can get them done and based upon the availability of the existing funds. Because I think as you've all seen, we received like $350,000 more than we projected for chapter 91 this year, which has really helped for us for trying to get paving done. So there's a few moving parts that we're trying to sort through here and there's a few groups that we need to interact with, but we're trying to get as, as much paving done as possible. The other thing I'll just flag here is that we have funding from the federal government with a town match to pave curb to curb the areas that will be disturbed by the town center wastewater line. But there are areas that extend beyond the curb to curb area, and I'm thinking in front of the funeral home and that whole area that are in need of repaving. So DPW has flagged this and said, it may make sense for us to just pave it all at once. And there's all, I think everyone or some are aware, there's a state paving project that will be happening from just to the east of the town center all the way to the Middleton Town Line. There may be a gap that's left uncovered. We've gone to the state to say, hey, can we pave a little bit further to the west and meet up with this project? And then we have, you know, from the center of the town all the way to the east side of the town, you know, new pavement. So, so again, some moving parts. We're not usually talking in this level of detail at this stage, but the calendar moves quickly and we want to just make sure everyone's aware of the things that we're looking at and talking about. Funding town building repairs, oh, sorry, sorry.
You missed one.
It wasn't, it wasn't by choice.
Yeah.
So the, the library elevator has been an ongoing challenge for us this summer, beginning with that last week in June, when it went into failure. And it, I believe, dates to 1990, Mr. O'Leary-ish, and was sort of, a number of components were replaced and updated a little more than five years ago at this point in time, but the elevator went into a situation where it's, you know, not operable at this point. I think most folks are aware of that and the library staff is doing its best. The public has been more than patient, but the information we have in hand today is indicating a very long lead time for a repair. And we could be talking between six and nine months. So in light of that, we believe that this is a priority project for consideration at Fall Town Meeting for funding, for the design and the replacement of the elevator components that will need to be replaced, including the cylinder that supports it, all of the controls and safety mechanisms as well. So that timeline being far longer than we were initially projecting back in June and July, what we are looking at is the installation of a temporary ramp in the front of the building to provide accessibility to the main floor of the library. Right now, if somebody shows up and they're unable to climb stairs, they're really limited because they can't even go in the front door based upon the few steps, the six steps I think it is that are in the front and the lack of an elevator inside. That's an expensive proposition as well to meet the requirements for this building and the commercial type use that it has rather than the homeowner type use that you might be familiar with for a ramp. And that's a pretty intrusive project that will be very visible in the front of the building, but with the timeline we're talking about at six to nine months, I think the public works director, myself, and library director feel that it's necessary. So our thinking is that we would fund that using previously authorized town building repair funds and then supplement them with an article here that you see on that list so that there's still funding for these other projects. So the rates we've been talking about, you know, were as low as renting something for a series of weeks or a few months, in the $20,000 range to something that we may need to purchase that's more in the $50-plus thousand range. So that was hard for me to hear in terms of the cost this morning, but when we talked about the 32, 33 a week lead time we might be dealing with, we may not have a choice in terms of maintaining access to the building to the extent that we can, at least the main floor of the building where the, the main desk is, where the computers are, where there are areas that people can access some books, some reading areas. So I just want to make folks aware, that's in the works right now and it's been happening in the background. It's taken us a long time to try to get answers in terms of the way to proceed, but that is looking like the direction that we may need to proceed in. So this 11th article would effectively replace that funding so that it's available for the projects it was intended for, whether they are, there's various carpeting projects and some other small improvement projects for the municipal buildings that would be addressed with this. Article 12 would appropriate funding for 20 Elm Street and this would potentially create additional funding or move some funding for litigation into town council to support the cost of the non-litigation related council expenses that we have for this. And so we're looking at how much that might need to be and whether that makes sense in order to stabilize or maintain stability in what was an already increased town council budget for something that we know is going to require quite a bit of town council services. Article 13 came from the superintendent of schools, I believe on behalf of the school committee, which is a follow-up to our discussion about the MSBA submission. The MSBA has received the submission and they are looking to do a visit here in North Reading with regard to the request to replace both the hood and little school modular classrooms with the permanent structure at the hood school. And so this is a placeholder article that is intended to flag that this is an issue. It might be something that needs to be funded independent of the MSBA, but it's looking like it's at least getting consideration from the MSBA at this point in time. And whether or not the timing works for action at October town meeting or not is unclear. This is something that would be a debt exclusion funded project. There isn't funding identified at the moment that would pay for this otherwise, so to the extent it can be, the cost can be reduced potentially by MSBA might be to our advantage. So there'll be a lot more discussion about this, but just letting folks know this project's out here. You know, it's out there. We talked about it in concept a year and a half ago when the study of the buildings was done, and we talked about it, I think, again, when we presented the capital plan here in, in April for the board's review and approval. Article 14, this is a zoning bylaw amendment that would make some adjustments to the floodplain district that was approved at the January special town meeting for maintaining our FEMA flood maps. There's some adjustments that were recommended by the attorney general, and I know the planning commission has conducted an initial review to make those adjustments and will have a hearing for them, I believe, in September. So that's what that article represents. And then I mentioned the sidewalk on North Street, that would require an acceptance of land to expand the right of way for that sidewalk in front of 239 North Street. And I believe that was a condition of approval from the planning commission a year or so ago. Okay. So that might've been the more straightforward things, believe it or not. The next articles, I flag these specifically as potential other articles for, for things that have been identified and that have been out there as concerns that you may want to address. Doesn't mean we need to address all of them or that they need to be even addressed in this order. I put them on there to sort of spur the, you know, discussion, give the board members something to consider as we're moving forward and, you know, to provide the opportunity for any feedback. So just taking them in order. Funding to create classification compensation schedule for non-union municipal employees. It's not intended to be a salary survey for the purpose of necessarily even determining whether a compensation level is correct or not. It's more intended to do as the law requires, which is create appropriate pay scales for positions, which may or may not be broad or not. So to be clear, you know, this is to address a situation where there isn't necessarily a pay scales in place for our non-union employees. Our union employees in general have a pay scale that's available to them through a union contract. We're not looking to change that, but we are looking to try to set something in place for non-union municipal employees, not school employees. Appropriating funds for Martin's Pond Maintenance and Treatment, this is a specific request. I have it down here as potential, but I think it came from George back in June, so it probably belongs up above in the list as something that's being asked for. It's the best way for us to support the work at Martin's Pond because the funding is in place from one year to the next and they can grab from it when they need it. And so I think the number I heard was 15,000, is that what you heard?
Right.
So in that, again, it'd be available immediately, it'd be available for next spring if it's needed, it'd be available in the summer if it's needed as well, and there won't be a need to, to wait and decide what happens at June town meeting and whether it's available. So.
I would move that up.
Yeah, top of off, right.
Top of off, yeah.
Some discussion about whether we should be appropriating additional funding for substance abuse treatment mitigation and prevention. That funding source is our settlement fund, our opioid settlement special purpose stabilization fund. So the town is a party to multiple legal actions as a class action type suit and has been receiving payments in. We already have one article that appropriated funding for recovery coach program and this would look for, you know, a potential additional appropriation of fundings, of funding. There'll be more discussion about what the programming might exactly look like, just making folks aware of this. The next few items relate to our facilities, excuse me, in light of the nearing completion of the facility's master plan and the feedback that we've heard about the senior center, Article 19 would appropriate funding, again, this is an estimate, 15 to 30,000. I'm saying from free cash, but that number's not been certified at this point. It won't be until probably after the warrant is signed at this point. But this would allow us to go, take the, the space need identified in the facility's master plan and look for space that could be leased fairly quickly in order to provide additional space for senior services. And I think the thinking is in one place. Where could the senior center go in one place and not have to travel around or access three, four or five buildings? That's the case right now. So we're trying to, to better understand what that could look like based on the square footage in terms of the cost per year because we anticipate it will not be inexpensive to lease the amount of space needed, but it's something that gets us an area to provide, you know, and our services perhaps more efficiently without having to wait for a municipal construction project to happen. So we put that out there. The follow-up to that is, you know, planning for a building. And, you know, I don't want to prejudge any outcomes from the facility's master plan, but the intergenerational slash community slash senior center is clearly a priority in addition to the work already ongoing for the fire department. This would be funding that would allow us to advance that planning, you know, to the next stage for a building, if that's something we're looking to do. And again, I think that's for you all to decide once you've seen the master plan. I know you've seen the draft of it, but you've heard from the committee. But just don't want that to not be out there in the queue for considerations we go into October town meeting, given the concern about the senior center and the demands on that building and staff. The next couple of items are related to property we have and really about, you know, do we want to invest funding to evaluate how we access the property and what we could use it for? The timing may or may not be right for that in light of the earlier articles, but I just flag it because I know people ask me every once in a while, what's going on with the Smith property or Riverwood as it's called? And this would be funding that would allow us to figure out, you know, how could we access, access it? Can we even access it? What could we do with it? And I don't necessarily think it would even be this board that would be, you know, making the decision. The land utilization committee would probably be involved. There's other boards and committees here in town that might want to be involved. But I also recognize, we've owned the property 15, 20 years, this one?
That long.
At least 11, I know that.
A while.
Well, actually, it's at least 15. So it's been, been a while and, you know, it's there and it's sort of serving the purposes of open space right now, but the access to it is very challenging. And so again, it doesn't need to be that October 2025 is when we go forward with this, but just identifying that, hey, we may want to be looking to do that at some point soon or, or maybe we don't. Maybe we're okay with it, serving the purpose that it is, which is as open space along the Upper River, you know, and leaving it at that. Similar discussion for One Central Street, which we acquired back in 2024, four? Do we want to look to how we could make use of the buildings that are on the property, which is really a single-family home, a garage with an addition on the home? Or do we want to knock the home down and have the property sort of be clean property that's there for whatever use we determine in conjunction with the abutting properties in the future? I think letting the property just sit there and not doing anything with it, which is what is happening right now, is probably not the best answer for it. But again, you know, this, this may need to wait because there's a lot that we have going on that we've, you know, talked about already here. I just, I flag it so that everyone kind of recognizes that this is an issue that's out there and that we're certainly aware of it. And then the final article on there, in light of the MBTA, the ride language that was put into that legislation, there's a question about whether we need to continue to be members of the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority in the way that we are or we just fully committed to the MBTA. That's unknown right now, but that would require, you know, to formally withdraw a vote at town meeting and a vote at the ballot. So just to put that on there, but again, that might...
Vote at the ballot, too?
Ballot as well, yeah.
For the Merrimack Valley?
Yeah.
So we do it by ballot to get in?
No, not to get in, it was a vote here by the select board.
Right. But in order to get out, take the ballot?
That's our understanding. So again, just flagging that that, not even sure we're recommending that right now because the number of rides that are being utilized from that program are very low. You know, there, I think it's the ride into Boston that's getting the most use from MEVA, but there's very little that's happening beyond that. So I don't want to make it seem like this is huge expense. We only get billed for what services are being accessed and it's a fairly low number. But I don't, you know, in light of the ride, we may want to make a full transition back to the MBTA for that purpose. And I did, wasn't standing at the town clerk's office right at four o'clock, but I did hear from the town clerk, so there were no citizen petitions received prior to the deadline for this October town meeting. So on paper, in a draft, 24...
Swan Pond Trails, any money needed?
No, I, we're hoping to just do a third donations.
I just was asking, you're still wondering about the, the trails up at Swan Pond.
Yes, yeah.
Not going to be...
Yeah, we're not...
Do approved. I just didn't know if it was going to be, just to throw it on the list.
Yeah, no, no, yeah. That's the type of conversation I was looking to for, prompt.
No, I mean, we're still, we got to work out the legal part of it. And so Allison is putting together, I got to come back to you on that actually. It's, we're applying to AVA, I'm trying to think of the acronym, to actually get... It's, we're applying to AVA, I'm trying to think of the acronym, to actually get them to give us a waiver on their regulations for that purpose.
State agents?
What is that?
The state agency you're applying to?
It's state-
Architectural-
Oh, I just have a barberry of-
I knew this, I knew this off the top of my head. Yeah. So they have a legal reason. So the National Forest Service has guidelines, which Massachusetts has adopted, but it's just guidelines. So they encourage you, it's best practices to use it, but nobody's going to hold you accountable if you don't use it, for our purposes. But ABA is, they can legally go after it if you don't follow what they're looking for. But because it's legal, you have the right to appeal to them to get things, you know, waivers, or I don't know how else to describe it, like you get permission to do things that doesn't follow the guidelines, because the guidelines they're giving is so strict that no one could ever really use it. And for our purposes, we're not asking for that much. We're asking to keep it in its most pristine condition. And so we're going to ask them, and we think we already have someone on the inside who said, yes, this is possible, just get the, the appeal together, and we'll probably find it in your favor. And if we get that done, then we can move forward without feeling like someone's going to yank it out from underneath us at the end of the day. So that's in process.
Through you, Mr. Jim. So my recollection is, there's very limited access right now. You're looking to improve that access for everybody in as least invasive a way possible.
Yes.
But we believe the standard is a much more invasive improvement would need to be made, an expensive improvement, in order to comply with the regulations right now.
Well, I mean, it would be, let's put it this way, we wouldn't even push, if they, if they forced us to do everything ABA said we had to do, we would just say, kill the project. It just wouldn't even be worth it. And they don't want that. And the Commission of Disabilities also reviewed the plan that we have, and they totally agree that we should move forward as it is, you know, and try to make it as accessible as possible, but not compliant.
Yeah.
So-
So that's all, I just wanted to-
Yeah. But we're not even close to funding yet, and if we're doing funding, the goal is to probably get donations to get it done.
Great.
Yeah.
All right. First of all, Michael, thank you very much for putting this together in the format that you did. I know we talked about, you know, putting the warrant together, but begin with a condensed timeline. The board needed to be informed as to really what are we looking at, and you've done a great job of formatting it simply enough so even I can understand it, which is much appreciated. Mr. Studo or Mr. Massey, any questions or comments in relation to, again, this isn't finalized, it's just, this is what's in the queue, not necessarily what's going to make the cut, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Massey, any comments or questions?
Yeah, one question on the Smith property. Just a few questions. How much did we buy that for, in what year?
About three million, about three million dollars, yeah, probably twenty years ago.
Yeah, two or something like that.
Maybe longer, I forget. Time flies.
How much, what was it, what was the-
I believe it was three or three point two.
I don't know why one point eight sticks out.
Four point eight, I thought it was about three.
And again, I know, I wasn't active in what happened.
Don't know, we'll get the answer to the question. We'll get the exact figures and date.
It's fine.
It was a lot.
I think a ballpark. The, the buildable acreage on that?
What was proposed there was a forty, was a, what was going to be proposed was multifamily homes there, particularly a, potentially a forty B.
No, but the technical buildable acreage with that lot, what is that?
I'm not sure that we-
Is it in the twenty-something acres?
I'm not sure that we even know that, Mr. Massey. I think that's part of sort of what, I think I'm trying to, you know, wondering whether we should get our arms around it. My understanding is that, that the potential development of the property for the number of homes, and what was the number you said? Did you say another number?
I don't know, forty something.
So whatever the number of homes was going to be developed, the owner had access through a public way to do so, but we do not.
In the adjacent parcel of land that they own, their family residence was directly next door.
And my, my rec, just for the history, my recollection, this is the very early days of my time here when this issue was resolved.
I understand, I think I understand the access was always difficult over wetlands, but I thought there was a portion of it, maybe half of it, that was not wetlands.
There is, there isn't a chunk, there's a significant portion which was buildable, you know, to what degree is questionable, because we didn't dive into the specifics of it. All we knew was the town had a hundred and twenty days to react to a price, and we had a town meeting to acquire it for the agreed-upon price, because it was in farmland status. So farmland status, it was getting a break, tax break on it. If it's under that status, the town has a hundred and twenty days in order to exercise its option to purchase the property, and that's what the town did at the time, rather than allow it to be developed. So there really wasn't a, all there was was a set price and a stated plan as to what they were looking to develop there. There were no plans submitted at the time.
I'm in favor of the, I'm in favor of the potential article. I think it's great to see what it would take to access that land, but I guess that's what I'm getting, is how much land are we trying to access? Because it's going to be, what I'm thinking of, business investment of, we made, you know, we bought three point two million dollars. It's going to be something that we can put over there, or future, put over there, but being able to access it is obviously step one, so, yeah, I'm in favor of those.
Mr. Studo, have any questions?
No, sounds good. I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just say, on the access to the Smith property, if we go back to the Greenway Trails, one of the benefits of that project would be to have a bridge being able to connect over, and that would give us the access we don't have right now. And that would be supplemented by the state.
No, that, that bridge was for pedestrian, pedestrian access, not for vehicular.
I think it has to be strong enough for an ambulance to get through, I believe. So anyways, that's a possibility, but that's one of the ways we're going to have access. And the only thing that the Greenway Trails is waiting for is Lynnfield to be able to sign off on the same documents we'd have to sign off on for. So right now Lynnfield's standing in the way, otherwise that'd be going forward. But that is one of the benefits, is you get a bridge from Elm Street into that property.
Mrs. Herbert?
One of the reasons that the town pursued purchasing this Smith property was to prevent, you know, I don't believe the town ever had any desire of the time to develop it or put something on it.
No, we didn't. And again, the timeline was such, this particular situation, we only had a hundred and twenty days to react.
No, I understand, I understand.
So we had no plans, we didn't even, wasn't even on the radar screen until we got notified.
My point is that even if there was access, it was not the intent of the town to purchase it so that they could put something on it.
Correct.
It was to prevent.
Correct.
Larger, you know, that the Smith had a vision.
Correct.
Any other questions, Mr. Massey?
Just thinking that, just thinking that at some point, if the town needs land for all these desires we have, I think you end up looking at what we have in our hands first, so that's, instead of acquiring more.
Right, might be nice to be able to access some land that we own. That's a good idea, to take a look at. Mrs. Moran, any questions or comments in relation to what's presented this evening?
I don't have any comments on the potential articles. I just have a reminder for the board and the members of the public, the real senior program, the third annual, it's going to be September thirtieth, and it's at the Wakefield Elks, and they're trying, the friends are trying to raise some money for the event.
Okay, good. Anything else, Mr. Waller? I don't think, okay, we're all set there, I guess. Thank you, Mr. Gilberto, again, for putting this together in the fashion that you did. All right. Article twelve, we're going to-
Can you just provide a quick update and stop me from going too far? How's that sound?
Yeah.
So the board was in executive session talking about the value of the property, but ultimately the-
The general item is Nine Mill Street.
Yeah.
The disposition of Nine Mill Street. Again, we went through a process of trying to sell it and didn't come up with any bidders, and so now we're investigating other options to dispose of the property in a timely fashion. And again, one of the things we talked about earlier in this discussion of the Moran articles was to engage the services of a real estate broker in order to assist us in facilitating the sale of the property. And that's pretty much what we decided to do at this particular point in time. So probably have to solicit some quotes from realtors to how much would they, how much would they offer their services for in order to facilitate the sale? We'll be analyzing that, and then the board will make a determination, a future date as to how to proceed and move forward.
And the focus of all that being to maximize the value of the property.
Correct. Thank you. So we've covered that one. Next one. Meeting minutes. Mrs. Moran?
Mr. Chairman, I want to approve the regular session minutes for July seventeenth, PM, P.M.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wallner, seconded by Mr. Wallner. Any further discussion? I think, Mr. Studo, you were somewhere foreign, so you might want to abstain, correct?
Yes, I abstained, I'm going to abstain on the first two.
Okay, very good. All right, so any further discussion on approval of regular minutes for July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Mr. Studo abstain? Correct. Mr. Massey?
Sorry, do you mean I?
Yeah, it was an I, okay. Mrs. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Mrs. Moran?
Mr. Chairman, I want to approve the regular session minutes for July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, PM, P.M.
Second. A motion and a second on the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, PM, meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Studo?
Abstain.
Right. Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mrs. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next, July twenty-first.
Mr. Chairman, I want to approve the regular session minutes for July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, PM.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mrs. Moran? Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next one, Town Administrator's Report. Hope it's not as long as the last one.
It's not nearly as long. Two items, though.
That was a record, by the way.
It was. A lot happened between June and July. The Department of Public Works is preparing water bills and trash bills, which will go out this week. The water bill's going to reflect the rate that was approved at the water rate hearing back on June sixteenth, which was a substantial increase, both to reflect the cost of purchasing water and the increase in the cost of work being done in Andover and the rate that they are then setting along. So I just want to remind folks, those bills are going to be coming, you know, to your homes. They'll be posted online as well. It does reflect an increase, you know, be aware-
Is it fifteen percent?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent increase, so.
And the, it's a significant increase. It's something that, you know, we had initially been anticipating going back to the past two years, and then there was a further increase that is also being passed along to ratepayers in Andover, to be very clear. We are not being targeted by what's taking place. We have an IMA that controls what our rates are for the first ten years, and we're coming near the end of that. And at the same time, Andover is increasing the investment it's making in its own system, which is also going to be passed along to the town of North Reading in its purchase of water. I will say, we did meet with the town of Andover to talk about the situation with the water. And since that time, I think because of a couple of things that have occurred, the number of discolored water calls does seem to have gone down significantly. It is still happening, and when it happens, we urge people to call DPW so that we can get out and flush right away. But we are still proceeding with a water master plan, which will look at whatever other improvements could be made in our system to reduce the incidents, the instances of discolored water. But again, just want to inform folks, those bills are coming, and they do reflect that fifteen percent increase, as was approved at the hearing and was ultimately recommended by the Water Commission. And then I also included a copy of a press release that Senator Tarr's office put out on behalf of the North Shore Water Resilience Task Force, of which Andover and North Reading are both members. We are no longer a water supplier, but we are certainly operating a distribution system here, and we work in partnership with Andover and this entire group. We, you know, I think in the eyes of this group, done our part to minimize the pressure on the Upstate River by no longer drawing water out of that watershed. But we still continue to be an active part of the group, and you can see a little more in the press release about what they're doing. That concludes my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business, set up our upcoming meeting schedule. Town administrator, the distribution with suggested dates, some of the dates are per our policy, but again, with the Monday holidays that intervene and the months that have five, five Mondays, we have suggested dates, which are all highlighted, and I think the board members got them all. Again, it carries us out through the, through May, yeah, through the beginning of May, so that there's some certainty here, instead of just doing it, you know, quarterly or every six months, so. If there's no objections.
Mr. Larry?
Mr. Studo?
February sixteenth and April twenty-first is difficult, it's school vacation weeks.
February sixth.
And again, I know we ran into this last year, but, I mean, if there's a meeting where, you know, in, just because of scheduling, that we overlap with the school committee, you know, I know we've done a bunch of Andover backwards last year, so, but those things do not work for me.
That's the sixteenth and twenty-third?
Twenty-first of April.
Oh, twenty-first of April, I'm sorry.
So February sixteenth, that Tuesday, and then New Day, or twenty-
Okay, twenty-first, we have highlighted the twenty, all right, we have highlighted the twenty-seventh, so. And the sixteenth, we, the week of the sixteenth, we have highlighted the twenty-third, February twenty-third, rather than the sixteenth. So that's what I'm suggesting, what I'm suggesting is-
All right, the highlighted, or, is the one that we're going for.
We're suggesting, we're suggesting the highlighted dates for some of the very reasons that you just stated, as far as the school vacations and, and again, the policy calls for, you know, first and third, but it doesn't always work because of the Monday holidays. You know, we established that policy, we had fewer holidays. So.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I am, so the highlighted meeting dates are the dates that I would recommend. It seems, it seemed to flow a bit better in terms of spacing the meetings out. The one thing I would just note, though, is that September eighth meeting, I'm thinking that will be beyond the date that we would need to sign the warrant for the fall annual town meeting. So it works great from an overall scheduling standpoint, but that date, we're going to need to be sending the warrant, I think, to the printer on the, on the fifth. We're going to, I'm going to have a discussion with them about the possibility of them printing it Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and mailing it Friday, to see if we can avoid having to move that, that eighth meeting, because it's going to mean meeting on a night that's not Monday on the week of September second, which we could do, but obviously brings its own challenges if people have other things going on in the evenings.
All right, so as far as the first week of September, from a printing of the warrant standpoint, it's either the day after Labor Day or not.
Yeah.
So it would be the second.
I'm not available on that day.
Right, yeah, right, so unless we meet on Wednesday or Thursday.
You could do Wednesday or Thursday, yeah. I know one year, I think we did Wednesday, if I'm correctly.
Right. So Wednesday-
Last year, we did Wednesday.
Right, last year, we did Wednesday, so it would be Wednesday, the third. Again, we'd be signing the warrant.
Yeah, that's right. You could do Wednesday, the third, in lieu of the eighth.
I'll be a fee on that day, but, you know, I'll just do my best to attend.
You're gonna be my-
I'll be a fee on that day.
Oh, if he on the, okay.
Yeah.
All right. That, Wednesday, the third?
I'm available for the third.
And Nick, you all set for Wednesday, the third?
September.
September. Set the day after Labor Day, which is Tuesday, the second, Wednesday, the third. And then with Tarr-
Yeah, works for me.
That works for you, okay. And Vincenzo, you're all set on the third, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So why don't we tentatively set up first meeting in September for the third?
Okay.
And then, is everybody else okay with the, the highlighted dates for the rest of the time period outlined in the-
I'm gonna be out of country on September twenty second. I'll also point out Rosh Hashanah, the night of Rosh Hashanah.
The twenty second is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'm also out of the country.
So we, we, during the- Okay, so that will be informational hearings. And again, we're probably going to, we will need a meeting for the informational hearing, right?
Yeah.
Do it on the twenty ninth.
Could do the third and the twenty ninth, it's a big, a big gap, obviously, in between. Could do the third and the fifteenth, I'm not, you know, this other business, third, fifteenth, and twenty ninth. The fifteenth will be too soon for the warrant article hearing.
Right, it'll be too soon, right.
So working backwards, I think the twenty ninth will have to be the warrant article hearing, it's sounding to me, even if that was the only-
Right.
-thing we did that night.
All right. So we're gonna be set for Wednesday, the third, and the twenty ninth, which is Monday?
Yes.
Monday. Monday, the twenty ninth. Monday, the twenty ninth. And then just a question of whether we have a meeting in between here.
Yeah, I suspect, I suspect there's gonna be a demand for something, even if it's town meeting, you know, dollar amount related or whatever, under the-
I would think so, I mean, we have-
Even if we just set the twenty ninth, we're only gonna do the informational hearing, you know what I mean? Do the regular, you're close, pretty close to your regular meeting schedule at that point. The first and third weeks, and then the fifth week is the hearing for the town, town meeting.
Okay. So Wednesday, September third, Monday, the fifteenth, and Monday, the twenty ninth.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
I'll be out of the country for the fifteenth as well.
What's that?
I'll be out of the country on the fifteenth as well.
All right, we'll let you know what we did.
Yep.
You'll read about it in the paper, all right?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
I trust you guys.
Nick and Vincenzo, okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so Wednesday, the third.
Yeah, it sounds good. You guys mind, does someone mind just sending out an email with the revised dates?
Yeah, for sure. All right, so Wednesday, the third, Monday, the fifteenth, Monday, the twenty ninth, and we're trying just keep the twenty ninth to warrant article hearings, but we'll see what else.
Yep.
Something else will mess us up, but that's okay, we'll try. Right? And then the rest of them, we'll go with the highlighted dates.
I'm not available the twenty second of December.
Oh, second of December? Which, which December, I'm sorry? Twenty second? Twenty second?
Yeah.
All right. All right, okay, you wanna do it at twenty second December, you wanna do the fifteenth? The eighth and the fifteenth, I mean, when we got two weeks in a row?
That was a thought, I, I'm just thinking, we're trying to finish licensing at that point in time, so-
Right. Right.
We could do the eighth and the fifteenth, we could do the eighth and the twenty second, that's too close to Christmas for folks, for the holidays for folks.
And again, most of the business that we transact in December is license renewals, unless there's some other crisis that presents itself.
Which has happened.
Which has happened before, you know, like elevators break and ramps that need to be purchased, things like that. So Catherine, if you don't mind, we're gonna keep the twenty second, all right? And then, so we'll do the eighth to twenty second, and as we get closer, we can revisit and see what's going on.
Sure.
All right, so Vincenzo and Nick, we're all set with the, the highlighted ones, just knowing that Catherine probably won't be around the twenty second of December, but we may revisit that, depending upon what we get hit with here.
Okay.
All right. So just to recap, again, Wednesday, September third, we're gonna have September fifteenth, Monday, and Monday, the twenty ninth of September, sixth of October, twentieth of October, third of November, seventeenth of November, eighth and twenty second of December, January twelfth and twenty sixth, February ninth and twenty third, March second, ninth, sixteenth, and then April sixth, and then April twenty seventh, then May fourth, and May sixth, so which will be reorged after the election.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just, I know it says it there, but for the benefit of everybody, we're, you know, proposing the three budget hearing dates, all be on Monday nights, as we did last year, a bit earlier, not waiting till the end of March, but doing them a bit earlier on the second, ninth, and sixteenth.
We reserve the right to have a Saturday session if we think it's gonna be necessary. And if someone brings muffins.
Sure.
Yeah. And now that Heavenly Donuts is gonna be open, we'll have an opportunity to nourish